Good evening and welcome to the April 22nd, 2024 City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. Yes, go ahead and buckle in and that was your dingler just to let you know that we are ready to roll. Council, thank you for being a part of our city government workshop meetings. The council discusses issues but does not take formal action. Agenda packets are available on the city's website, www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. For those present, as you enter to the right, that small table to your right is where you may find printed agendas. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube, channel, and GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. The public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. I'd like to, Mr. Cruz, if you'll do the formalities, standing and yep, same guy that's been here for about a month and a half now. If anyone needs any interpretive services, Mr. Cruz is ready and willing to assist. We also have the headsets back to my right, be your left if you're seated, if necessary. So please make known to Mr. Cruz any need for assistance. Couple of things before we get rolling. One is we have adopted a new ordinance that allows for public comment up to eight minutes, four minutes per side. That ordinance is yet to be effective. If somebody's got a pressing comment on a particular item, as we adopted the ordinance for speaking and public comment in public workshop, it was designated to the particular item, not the general public comment section. If you have a particular pressing interest, please raise your hand and we'll assess kind of the availability. Again, that ordinance is yet to be effective due to good old archaic publication requirements in the revised Code of Washington, take your legislature. And then the second thing I'd like to note is we are well aware of the situation developing across the river in West Richland. We would like to express our heartfelt condolences to those involved, bystanders, bystanders, and those directly involved in the incident. Certainly, I'd like to express deputy chief gratitude to our Pasco PD force who is out there with our SWAT force, and it sounds like they're heavily involved in the operations. And for those who would like to take a moment of silence, do what you do. I'll pray, not going to require you to, you know, send out well wishes to that family. But we'll take a moment of silence to recognize that. And thank you. With that, we will move back into the regular agenda, which is a roll call. Ms. Debbie.
Council members. Blaisdell.
Present.
Rahas.
Grimm.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Milney.
Present.
And Mayor Serrano.
I am present. If you all stand with me and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can get, we're going to go verbal reports and then Mr. City Manager, verbal reports, and then we'll move into exec. Perfect. Just a heads up, we will be having an executive session after verbal reports. It's not printed, but it's going to happen. So verbal reports from council members. Mr. Milney.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a pretty busy weekend this last week. I did attend the Modus Chiropractic Grand Opening there off of Road 100. And I thought what was kind of unusual about it is you don't need an appointment for chiropractic services. So again, they're right there at the Circle K intersection on Road 100. Then on Thursday, I did have my Pasco School District Skill and Technical Advisory, pretty good meeting. And then the fun one was actually on Saturday, I did attend the State Truckers Association had their state competition, and I was there with Chief of the Fire Department, Crowley, and we had a good time and got to shake a lot of hands and see big semi trucks move through an obstacle course. And hopefully, they could do it again next year, and they did it previous year. So they said they were really happy with the involvement with the city and then the good weather. And it was a good time. Was at the Happo Center, the back parking lot. And yeah, it was good to represent the city of Pasco.
Thank you, Mr. Milney, and thank you for covering that event for me. I was out of the area. Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, on the truck driving championships, I was also there, but I was on the soccer field coaching soccer. And I'd just like to make mention that actually even the baseball fields out there were packed. The Happo Center was a busy place on Saturday. And it is a reminder between the truck driving championships, between the soccer, between the baseball fields, you guys, I had to park at almost the interstate and walk to Birdham Boulevard. And that's okay, you guys. It's just a reminder of, you know, what a precious resource we have there, you know, as a community, if it's, you know, harnessed properly and everything. And so I also attended virtually the Franklin County EMS meeting. We meet quarterly. The kind of the big thing was every eight years they do an emergency preparedness, you know, kind of exercise and drill and everything like that and go through it. I wasn't in attendance for that, but I see one of our county commissioners, Steve Baumann, was there. And actually, one of the comments that came up in the meeting was that, you know, everybody was impressed with his insightful questions and just his interaction with all that. And then I also attended the Benton-Franklin Council of Governments meeting on Friday, just really just talking about, you know, roads and transportation and pardon the pun, kind of where we go from here. And yeah, so busy week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Seeing no further lights, I myself attended the Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Advisory Committee, better known as HAFAC. This afternoon, we talked about loaning out some money to the community. So just a reminder, there are still some monies available for those seeking. Right now, we're primarily focusing on municipal grants and municipal lending. Obviously, if the city of Pasco applies, I will not be involved directly in that inquiry or the response. But yeah, it's a great program. It comes from Hanford Waste Fees and helps to serve our region, diversify from the Hanford cleanup. With that, seeing no further lights, I, we will move on into item number, I guess technically this will be five, it's executive session. We are calling for an executive session for 20 minutes, and there will be two issues discussed. Under revised Code of Washington, 42.3301 subsection A, Roman numeral two, subsection J, discussion with legal counsel about current or, oh, excuse me. This is RCW 42301101 subsection one, Roman numeral one, discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation. That's the first item. The second item is RCW 42301101 subsection C, which is consideration of the minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate. If there's a likelihood, the disclosure would decrease the price per that section of RCW. And Mr. Ferguson, I believe we have four factors. If you'd like, I can recite them. I will do that then. Let's see. Well, those specific four are not listed. But it is final action for selling and leasing of public property. It must be, no, never mind. Discussing price. Can you get them for me?
Sure. So I believe, so this is for the sale or lease.
This is for the sale or lease element. Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So is it?
It's subsection 1101C.
Okay, so is it, is this the one with price?
This is price. Yeah, it just says the factors influencing price must be disclosed in public session.
Okay.
So yeah, I don't know what those are.
Mayor B, the land use.
The property, the land use and.
Yeah, land use, the price, the location, the, there's another one. Well, that'd be the use, not land use, but the actual use of the, from the buyer.
Yeah, the projected real estate. So it's the land use, the projected use, the property, and the potential price. So those are the four factors we'll be discussing under that section. So it's now 7:10. We're going to take 20 minutes. We'll be, we'll be back at
Thank you for your patience and sticking with us here. It is seven thirty. We are back from executive session. And we will move on to item number six, which for those following along would be item number five, which is items for discussion. The first is item A, presentation, Courseco Inc., Sunwillows Golf Course. Mr. Rice?
Good evening, Council Mayor. Just a little bit of brief history. The city entered into a partnership with Courseco Inc. in two thousand and eleven for contracted daily operations of our Sunwillows Golf Course facility. And two thousand and twenty-one, the city and Courseco transitioned to a twenty-year lease management model, which includes full financial operations and shared capital improvement fund commitments. This evening, Michael Sharp, Courseco CEO and President, is presenting an overview of the previous year's annual operations, some improvements they completed, and some related golf course events. So I introduce Michael Sharp.
Now we're ready? Is that better? Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, city staff. I'm Michael Sharp. As Jesse just introduced me, the president and CEO of Courseco. And we are your partner and the operator at Sunwillows Golf Course. So it's been a while. It's been, before you get to this slide, it's been a couple of years. We like to get in front of the council and provide an update of how we're doing, what's going on at the golf course, and basically the happenings and what's going on due to COVID, due to other related factors in the calendar. This is the first time we've been able to get back in front of council in a couple of years. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity tonight to talk a little bit about the golf course and what we have going on. First of all, just a brief history. Who is Courseco? Courseco, we're a golf course management company. We've been your partner, as Jesse said, since two thousand and eleven. We also operate Columbia Point and Columbia Park in the Tri-Cities. And we also operate Washington State University, Palos Ridge Golf Course, where we built the golf course, grew it, and we operate it. We have forty-four golf courses across the West Coast. I'm personally office out of Sonoma County in Northern California. And our primary business is public golf. Of our portfolio, ninety-plus percent is municipal golf, whether that's a city, a county, a water district, or a university. So that's what we focus on. We have four core values that drives every decision in our company. They're pretty simple. Number one, financial performance. You know, we're paid to drive the bottom line, so we have a relentless focus on delivering the largest bottom line. Number two is community inclusion. We have a feeling that these are recreational assets, and that while ten percent of the population plays golf, that's typically what it is in any community. There's ninety percent that doesn't play golf. So what do we do with that ninety percent? So all of our facilities, we have robust community programming that brings the entire community out, whether that's through food and beverage, that's non-golf activities. Later in the presentation, I'll touch on some of those events that we have out at Sunwillows in particular. Number three is stakeholder communication. It's doing this, right? It's updating our partner, what's going on, the good, the bad, some of the challenges and some of the opportunities we see. But it's not just this room, right? It's the home clubs, the ladies' clubs, men's clubs, and all the stakeholders in the community. And then last, it's fitting and earth day today, environmental stewardship. There's no firm that's more decorated than Courseco when it comes to environmental stewardship, and Sunwillows is no different. And I have a slide about that later in the presentation about some of the work we've done out there at Sunwillows with Ron Coons, our superintendent. So yeah, just a brief recap. In two thousand and eleven, for those that were not around, the city had a previous operator that was leasing the property, and there were some challenges. They did an RFP. They asked for some help. So we came in under a management agreement. I think the transition was less than sixty days. We came in, we hired all the staff, stabilized operations, and worked at the city over the next several years to stabilize operations, make some improvements, and really bring the four core values that I talked about that the city shared with Courseco in implementing those. And so we did that. And we did a couple of five-year extensions on the management agreement. And then prior to two thousand and twenty-one, maybe two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we had a lot of discussions with the city as it relates to the finances of the golf course. Some of the challenges were the infrastructure. How was the city going to invest in this facility with some of the cart path, some of the clubhouse issues, some of the drainage issues, just some of the ongoing maintenance of the facility? In addition, was how do we expand services at this facility to get more people to use the facility and also create more revenue? And that was, the idea came about that we would look into the opportunity to expand the food and beverage. Maybe put a banquet center in, maybe expand the pub, turn it into more of a restaurant. So that's when we entered into a long-term lease agreement. And basically what that means, Jesse summed it up well. We take the financial risk and burden of the property. We put the investment in the property, and the city is out of the risk business. No matter what the weather is, no matter what the rounds played are, we take the risk. And also, we partner to invest back in the property. And so we pay the city a rent, an annual rent, and then we pay a percentage rent over a certain threshold. So when we do well, the property does well, the city also does well. So just over the last five years, I think this is a good snapshot to kind of see how we've been doing. If I go back as far as two thousand and nineteen, one of the metrics that we use to determine how a business is doing, how the golf course is doing, this is standard in the golf industry, is rounds of golf played. And so if we go back to two thousand and nineteen at thirty-eight thousand, all the way to two thousand and twenty-three at forty-seven thousand, you can see that we've had some pretty steady growth. It's no secret that, in golf anyway, when we were going through the pandemic, golf was one of the few things that you could do safely and responsibly outdoors. So golf actually benefited from that in being able to provide this safe recreational outlet for the residents and the golfers. So we've had pretty good rounds growth. You know, you'll see a couple of blips in here. A lot of it's weather-related. Our business is more dictated by the weather and mother nature than maybe the latest marketing, you know, promotion that we have or price inducements that we have. We like to think that we're really good at that. But at the end of the day, weather plays a big factor in our success. This is just the revenue growth that we've seen. And again, I started with two thousand and nineteen at the one point six up to two point three, seeing the growth. And as we look at two thousand and twenty-four and beyond, we're still pretty bullish about it. We've made some improvements, which I'll talk about in a minute, to enhance the overall experience, you know, improve the turf quality, polish up some of the issues that are out there, such as the presentation of tee signs, cart paths, and even the buildings themselves. So some of the things that we've done over the last, you know, just a couple of years, besides, you know, tree planting, we fixed cart paths. I have some pictures of the tee leveling. Why that's important, it's the plain surface. Nobody wants a crowned surface. So tee leveling is very important. And over time, you have to rebuild tees. And so we've been singling out certain tees to rebuild and flatten, typically starting with the par threes, where most players use irons off those and do the most damage. Irrigation, pump house, the painting of the pro shop and the cafe. We brought in a whole new fleet of golf carts and also replacing the maintenance equipment. These are some of the things we did last year. I have some pictures coming up in a second, just showing our team rebuilding the seventeen. Some of the new signage, just enhancing the experience. You know, as you know, over time, you know, the benches, the signage, and so forth, they get weathered. And so we thought it would be a good investment to put new signage out there. And no one really, I mean, I'm not really thrilled about this, but it's in there. So for two thousand and twenty-four this year, some of the things that we're working on, the access road to the cart shed. A lot of residents store their own carts at our facility and plus our own carts. So we're improving the road there to get in and out. We have to do some floor replacement in the clubhouse. A lot of this is clubhouse and pro shop, replacing carpet, redoing paint, a couple of pieces of equipment here, improving the driving range. And then to be determined, we want to put a brand-new teaching studio out there. So we're currently working on the pricing on that right now, where we could do indoor-outdoor teaching and adopt some new technology like TrackMan, sort of the radar technology that tracks ball flight, helps the instructors, cool innovative stuff. Again, I talked about earlier just some of the programs that we have out there. We want to make sure that we keep this affordable and accessible to all. I'm very proud of some of the programs that we run out there. These are just some examples. I know you probably already read this in the packet. Again, program is pretty big. Like I said, you know, not only do we want to drive rounds of revenue, not only do we want to drive people to utilize the facility, we want to bring all users out. So we do a variety of events out there just to do that, from bouncy houses, trunk-or-treat, you know, food truck mania, you know, watch parties. And this is just a sampling of what we do out there. You know, for the summer coming up, PGA Junior League, PGA Junior Camps. We'll be talking about, talking with the city again about doing the junior camps again this upcoming summer. Again, one of our philosophies is, this is typically in the city, a golf course is the largest recreational open space in the city. And so how could we use this space for the betterment of the community? One of the things that we do is the Washington Interclass activities, the cross-country meet. This past year, we just signed a four-year extension with them to host it at Sunwillows. It's pretty cool. It's two thousand runners. And by the time you factor in volunteers, you know, officials, it brings in about four thousand people to the city. It's just a great event. It's a couple of days. It's a, it's a, it's a great event. And our superintendent and our maintenance crew do a wonderful job putting the golf course back together for the golfers on that third day. Just some more pictures of some of the events that we have out there. Again, it's more of an operating philosophy that the golf course should serve everybody. So just doing events to bring people out. Again, some more pictures. I talked about our environmental stewardship and the importance of that core value. You may not know, but Sunwillows Golf Course is Audubon certified. It recently became recertified. Our superintendent, which we were so fortunate to inherit in two thousand and eleven from the previous operator, we hired Ron. Ron works for us. And he has won Superintendent of the Year for our company out of forty-four superintendents for his work on the quality of the turf conditions, his community outreach, and his environmental stewardship. And he also won an ELGA award in two thousand and sixteen. Good on Ron. So the hospitality and service, obviously, is what we do. We measure this. We do secret shoppers. We do online surveys. We also do email surveys. We like to get feedback from our customers. This is just a snapshot of it. We have a proprietary, you know, sweat training program that we use with all of our employees. So this is just a snapshot of how we're doing. The data says we're doing great. You know, but you know, there's always opportunities for improvement. There's always opportunities where we can get better. There's always, you know, things that come up when you're dealing with sixty to seventy, seventy thousand impressions in a year. We like to use this and the feedback that we get to train our employees so that we can get better. So this is just a snapshot of some of the results. Questions? And I apologize for going over a couple of minutes there.
No, thank you for your time. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Rem?
Just one. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Sharp. How does our course compare? I mean, I think you said forty-four other courses that you, you know, manage and maintain. How do, how do we compare? You know, we always want to compare ourselves. How do we compare to other things you have going?
Yeah, so it's not because, you know, you're here, so I say you're the best. But yeah, so if I, so I took the forty-four, right, and put them in categories. When it comes to overall experience, right, I put it in the top ten. If I said profitability and, you know, no drain on the general fund, right, that's top ten. That's good. When it comes to the number of rounds and metrics, I would say the industry standard is probably around forty thousand rounds. So the fact that we're pushing that fifty thousand number is pretty good, including the fact that we have weather issues here, right? Not just in the winter, when we have days that are unplayable just due to, it's just too cold. We also have the opposite in the summer, which an anomaly is, we've had smoke days, right, where we've had some impact. We've had wind and heat days, right? So when it comes to the rounds, you know, we're in the upper echelon. When it comes to the quality of the turf and the quality of the architecture, it's in that top ten. The challenges that we have out there, like if I said, where would I rate us lower? Would be in our actual facilities themselves, right? They're dated. Those buildings are a little bit dated. The infrastructure is a little bit dated. The good news is, we have a very loyal and very proud community that supports it, and they come on out there. But one of the things that we're working on with the city is per our lease agreement, is to talk about how we can improve those facilities. And so we've hired a third-party consultant. They've already produced a draft of kind of their findings. And so the next step is for us and the city to sit down and talk about, you know, how do we finalize that report? And then what can we take from that to improve the facilities? In particular, I'm talking about that clubhouse and restaurant.
No, appreciate it. No, and thank you. I have a family member that comes and runs WIA cross-country. So yeah, that's a great thing. So thank you, Mr. Sharp. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rem. Mr. Proust.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to quickly touch on, we had a resident, Mr. Pat Jones, come a couple of weeks ago. And he expressed that he didn't really have a good customer experience. And so given that he did it publicly, I wanted to ask you if that's been properly addressed? And I guess what your staff's going to be doing differently going forward?
Yeah, I think it's great, right? Like, nobody ever likes to get those phone calls. Nobody ever likes to have those conversations. It's ironic, Mr. Pat Jones is sitting behind me right now. I talked to Mr. Jones on the telephone, right, to hear his horrific story. Number one, you know, I apologize. Right, that's not our standard, obviously. And I'm a little bit embarrassed that that transpired out there. And what did it do for us? It allowed us to turn to our code of conduct. If you've been to our website and seen our website at the golf course, we have a code of conduct. A certain decorum and experience that we expect everybody to abide by, whether you're a tournament player, you're an employee, you're a resident, whoever is utilizing that facility. We have certain rules and regulations to adhere by. And on that particular day, they did not. So we have, we have returned to retraining our staff to remind them of our code of conduct and following that. This wasn't really an employee issue. It was more of a guest issue, one of the patrons that were out there. And we've also committed to work with each of the formal and informal. There's a lot of informal groups that play out there that come as a group. And they may not have a formal agreement with us, but they come out there on a regular basis. So working with those groups and reminding them of the code of conduct and putting a little bit of teeth in that, so this can never happen again. And I actually, you know, I'll stop there if Mr. Jones wants to make a commoner thing. But it was as bad as it is to get that phone call and to have that conversation, it's the only way that we can address these issues head-on and put things in place and make ourselves aware that it did happen and put things in place to stop it from happening again.
Thank you, Mr. Proust and Mr. Sharp. Ms. Proust?
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to your, one of your core values, community inclusion, I see as part of your core value is community-focused programming. And as I'm going through your presentation, and again, thank you for your presentation, as I'm going through your presentation, you host the, what is it, the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association High School Cross Country Championships. It's a long one. Is there any type of partnership with the city Parks and Rec? For example, maybe some classes for five-to-ten-year-olds or something like that, junior classes for, you know, city kids?
Yeah, so let me touch on that. We did that last summer. And we fully anticipate doing that again this year. So we'll be sitting down with the city shortly to see how we can put that program back together or to implement it. You know, here we are, end of April, so time is of the essence to get that type of program together. And that is exactly something that we want to do. We want to be able to have access through as many channels as possible. We have two channels right now that are, we formalized with the PGA Junior League and our own junior camps, but we'd like to augment that with the city program. I fully anticipate that happening. I haven't heard that the city was not interested in doing that for two thousand and twenty-four, so we'll be having that conversation shortly.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing that. To me, when you're speaking about diversity and inclusion, let's try to make it accessible for everyone that normally doesn't, you know, participate in golf classes. And that would be our Parks and Rec, where we host a lot of sports for those kids that can't join the school-based sports. So thank you for looking into that, Jesse. I look forward to an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Proust. Seeing no for the lights, Mr. Sharp. Thank you for flying up here. Hopefully, you'll be pleased to know that Avila's apparently now flying up here. It looks like that opened. I don't speak for the port, but that's recent, you know, so that's an option if you need the direct flight from the Sonoma region. So again, thanks for the great presentation. And as a golfer myself, I'm So again, thanks for the great presentation and, uh, as a golfer myself, I'm, I'm glad to hear that things are getting addressed. Uh, with that, do we have any public comments on this issue? Again, limited to two minutes per person, four minutes per side. Seeing no comments, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item B, resolution, facility lease agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Benton and Franklin Counties. We've got Ms. Del.
Yes.
Sorry, just trying to look past the timer for the light to kick us off and then our, uh, partners here.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council member. It is my pleasure to introduce the executive director of Boys and Girls Club of Benton and Franklin Counties, Mr. Brian Ace, uh, who is rushing here, uh, after some pretty hard work today. So thank you for that, um, helping folks out in West Richland. Um, he's here to introduce himself and his organization to council. I know many of you are very familiar with Boys and Girls Club, but it's always good to know, um, what the organization is doing within the community. Uh, his attendance also coincides with, uh, request to extend a very long-term lease uh, on a city facility that the organization has leased, uh, since nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the lease, uh, at a cost that will be, uh, a net zero revenue to the city. Uh, but allow for the youth of our community and subsequently their parents in Pasco to enjoy the vital services that the organization provides. And with that, Mr. Ace.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. Uh, I think if it works for council, I'd love to kind of work through a bit of a presentation that tackles a few of the issues related to what club programming looks like at the Eighteenth Avenue Facility, um, what type of services the club offers, and then some plans for the future as well. And then we can leave time at the end for questions. But at any point, if you'd like to interrupt, uh, feel free to do that and we can, we can tackle some of those questions. First piece, just thank you both to staff and council. Um, this has been a long-term partnership, you know, as Ms. Lee Del, uh, mentioned since nineteen ninety-nine, uh, in which it's a unique arrangement. It's a city-owned building on school district land, um, in which the club operates a program for the youth of Pasco. And we're excited about all that's taken place there over the last two decades and what will come in the next decades as well. So quick piece, uh, on mission first, uh, many of you are familiar with Boys and Girls Club and the mission of clubs, but just want to make sure to orient us all on the same page. Um, our mission very much is to empower all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring and responsible citizens. This is what guides us and the staff that work in that club every day, the volunteers that come to support them, um, to serve the youth of Pasco. Some of our program models, uh, for Boys and Girls Clubs of Benton and Franklin Counties, the first is our community clubhouse model. This is really what we're talking about when we talk about the Eighteenth Avenue Facility. These are facility-based clubs typically in underserved neighborhoods and communities in which, uh, the goal is to have zero barriers to access. So some of that is a proximity transportation, physical access issue, but definitely a cost-related issue of what, as well. Making sure there's not barriers financially to youth accessing those programs. And so that's, uh, really what we're looking at today. We also have licensed childcare programs, both in elementary schools as well as early learning programs. So co-located with our community clubhouse at Eighteenth Avenue is a licensed preschool as well. That's on the south end of the building, uh, serving the community's kids there. And then our fourth program model really is virtual club, which we'll not talk about today, but is really a, an online way of engaging, uh, kids as well. Um, priority outcomes at clubs. What are we working on with the youth that come to our club, uh, any given day? We really focus on three soon-to-be-four things. And so I'll highlight the fourth that, that will officially change here soon. The first is academic success. We want youth to graduate high school, um, with a plan for the future that is a piece that they're passionate about. If that's a four-year university, that's great. If that's military service, if that's trade school or certification, if it's directly into the workforce. If they graduate high school with a vision for their life of what they want to do and the ability to do that, that is success. So we really focus on that with young people. The second is healthy lifestyle. So there we're looking at nutrition, yes, and physical fitness, but also healthy, age-appropriate lifestyle choice. And so that's a piece of that. And then good character and citizenship is a real critical one. Um, for us, if we fast-forward fifteen years and we have great graduates and alumni of Boys and Girls Club programs who are academically successful and live a healthy way, that doesn't mean anything if they do not have good character or have leadership and the ability to give back to their community and make it a better place. So that's a real critical one. Soon to be added to this official mix, but we've been working in this space for a while, is really life and workforce readiness. Um, you may call that functional adulting, right? Um, this is a challenge that many in this younger generation face of how do we transition from child to adulthood and how can the club help with that? So a couple, uh, clubhouse numbers piece from twenty twenty-three, just a little, uh, peek behind the curtain of what the services there look like. Um, so the first is we employ nineteen people, um, at our Pasco clubhouse. That's, uh, between the community clubhouse side and, uh, the preschool side as well. Um, those are people that have, um, full-time, um, or part-time, um, livable wage jobs here in the community. And so that's a critical piece. Um, operating expenses for that site is about a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. So that is an investment every year in offering services to the Pasco community. So that's a real critical number there as well. Five hundred and seventy-seven total members, um, of our Pasco clubhouse. Two hundred and sixty-three of those are teen members. And this is an incredibly important one because as our name sometimes can confuse people, when you hear Boys and Girls Club, you typically think of younger kids. We have very much leaned in over the last decade to realizing that young people who need us most, um, is really teenagers. And so how can we invest more resources in serving middle school and high school populations? And that's happening at all of our community clubhouses throughout Benton Franklin Counties, but definitely at our Pasco clubhouse as well. Um, last year, forty-two thousand snacks and meals served. We know that many of the kids that come to us at the Pasco clubhouse come from food insecure households. So we really want to be that bridge, uh, after the school day. So not only do we offer snack every day, but we offer dinner service as well. And then during summers, um, offer snack and lunch and dinner at that site, um, for the youth who attend. So question of impact, right? So as we talk about an investment in Boys and Girls Club, and the investment we're asking for you, of you tonight is that renewed lease, that investment of a facility, uh, to the work of clubs. One of the things that we've done research on at a nationwide level is what does that return on investment to the community? And I think a real important one here is this University of Michigan study, which really focused that for every dollar invested in clubs, it returns over nine dollars of impact to that community, um, in a variety of ways. And so an investment in clubs is really a cost savings measure for the community, uh, long-term and overall. Couple other metrics, average daily attendance. You see there that, um, we saw a dip in average daily attendance and that coincided with COVID. Um, so we obviously had impacts as, as most organizations did, uh, during the pandemic. Um, but I think what the important piece is that we've come out of that serving as many kids, um, as we did before. And so, um, we've, we've fully recovered and actually, um, you know, serve, uh, more kids now, uh, in this year than we did before the pandemic. Um, a piece here just to, to highlight is really revenue. And I want to really focus on this for a second because I think when we talk about the Pasco clubhouse, serving the youth of the community, one of the big questions is eight hundred thousand dollars a year. How does that happen, right? Um, at this time, um, the city of Pasco, um, is a great partner in the facility, um, but don't, doesn't invest financially. So how does that come to be? And this is a good mix of how that happens. So some of that's USDA food program, yes. Childcare revenue, we operate licensed childcare programs, both onsite for early learning as well as throughout Pasco. And some of the revenue from those programs comes to support and sustain this community clubhouse. But there's a lot of it that comes through special events, grants and individual donations. So we're able to fundraise in the community to ensure that these no-cost, no-bearer-to-access programming is available uh, for kids all the way from three years old, uh, up to eighteen. And so that's really the mix that, uh, revenue looks like for the Pasco clubhouse. I want to show you a quick video, um, that will probably give you a picture of the importance of club. And it's focused on two young men, uh, who attend our Pasco clubhouse.
We started to come to Boys and Girls Club because of my family, my sisters, my brother, my cousins. And my friend told me when I was in first grade that Boys and Girls Club is like a fun place to be at. And I was really interested in that, so I started going.
First interaction was years ago, um, when they were like in fifth grade and they were a lot more reserved, kind of shy, kind of just like stayed super close together.
That first day, we were like small and everybody like started saying, there's twins, there's twins, there's twins. And me and her were like just laughing, just smiling, cause we didn't have any friends. But as we got closer to club, that's when we had like a bunch of friends. So when we had friends, they always used to, um, confuse us a lot. So that's why, um, we used to change like hair, cause I was getting like a little bit like annoyed. Like my hair used to be straight, his hair used to be curly. And, um, that's how they could tell us apart.
I would get them confused all the time and I would feel terrible. But as you get to know them, you realize just how different they are and, and they love to be together and they're great together. But they're so different. And so kind of just like empowering them to just be themselves, whether that's like goofy or serious or whatever, just be yourself and own that and be confident in that. And so we kind of just like push that and empowered them to be that way.
From the time I started coming, I was like shy. I didn't want to talk to nobody. From like now on, like I'm like more active, more talkative. I joined in a lot of activities, clubs. I'm not shy no more.
Now they're just like a lot more like independent and outspoken and confident. And they make themselves heard in the teen room. And so we love to have them around. Yeah, they're amazing.
I keep on coming to club because the staffs take care of you like well. And like there's fun stuff to do here. There's cooking. We could like go outside and play sports and do activities with our friends, like if we're bored. Like I just feel happy like when I'm like over here to club.
We're helping like the teens that need us most in our community and we're helping them like build themselves up for the future. So when you invest into the Boys and Girls Club, you're investing into like the future of our community here. We're here every day trying to support our teens to become the best version of themselves. And so I think that's a great reason, you know, to, to pour into the future and the next generation ahead of us.
So a few highlights from some of our middle school members, um, but also wanted to share just a highlight from one of our high school members as well. Uh, Tanya was actually the youth of the year, uh, for our Pasco clubhouse this year. Youth of the year is the highest honor that a high school member can receive at Boys and Girls Club. And just a, a little quote from her, just about the impact of clubs on her life. So, um, with that, that kind of wraps up the portion where I wanted to update on programming. I do have a couple of slides as it relates to future and capital design. But as any questions programmatically, or do you want me to just shift directly into, um, the, the capital side of it? We can do questions.
I'll, I'll segue before you see any other lights. First, uh, as I'll speak somewhat for council member Prowls, uh, you know, both of us attended the youth of the year experience and that to me was certainly moving to watch these kids and hear their backstories and interview them and their future and kind of the hopes they've built over the time that they've been involved in Boys and Girls. I appreciate your service to our community. I appreciate your passion and your staff's passion for what you do. With that, please move into the next, uh, element of the project and certainly if, or, uh, presentation, certainly if we have questions is either along the way or as we go. But again, thank you for allowing me to be, participate and be a part of that experience.
It was wonderful to have you both. So thank you for doing that. Well, let me shift a bit towards capital. Now you, um, probably got digital packets and that may not be the most readable. I have hard copies if that's more helpful to see. So you holler at me. Um, but one of the things we really wanted to look at, and so we hired a structural engineer, uh, a couple, about two years ago now, to look at the Eighteenth Avenue Facility and, and ask the question, um, as we look at, at renovation or serving more kids in Pasco, does this facility suit us, right? And ultimately what it came back is that this is a good building with good bones in a great location that's worth investing in. And that is awesome and great news. So we engaged in some master planning work. We worked with Design West Architects, uh, to do a variety of focus groups, both of the young people we serve and the staff who serve them, uh, to really do some master planning work for the Eighteenth Avenue location. And, uh, what the, the architectural firm put together was a three-phase, uh, project that would allow us to invest in that facility to do a variety of improvements. Now, some of those improvements are not super attractive. I would say phase one is maybe the least attractive improvements to a building. We're talking about things like asbestos abatement. Um, we're talking about things like moving the entrance and creating a secure entry point to the facility. And I, I, I want to highlight that a little bit. Um, you know, I just came straight here. I apologize for being late from the incident at Wiley and West Richland. We have to protect the safety of our kids, right? So phase one does some of those non-glamorous pieces around safety and asbestos abatement and fire sprinkler systems and all those pieces. But it also opens the door for maybe the most important part of this renovation plan, which is phase two, which allows us to have, um, large and well-equipped, dedicated programmatic spaces for middle school and high school youth. We committed years ago to having dedicated staff and dedicated space for teens. Um, a few years ago, we realized that's not enough. And we have to have dedicated staff and dedicated space for middle schoolers and dedicated staff and dedicated space for high schoolers. And this will better allow us to do that at the Pasco clubhouse. And then phase three, uh, much further in the future, uh, looking at some renovations to kitchen and cafeteria, especially as we continue not only cooking programs for kids, but also food distribution programs, uh, meals and snacks served as well as distribution for families. And so it's, it was great work, uh, with the architect in which to do this. And then the question came, well, how do we pay for this, right? And a couple of things happened and, uh, that allowed for that to, to really take place. So the, the first was we got some private investments so far and we'll continue to work on this. So one was through, uh, the Murdoch charitable trust as well as, uh, some private contributions mainly from our board. We have not asked community members to donate to this project yet, just board members, um, as, as we look at increasing dollars for that. We, um, had early conversations with the city a couple of years ago around some allocation of ARPA funding, uh, similar to the ARPA funding that's been allocated for Martin Luther King Junior Center, um, for this project. And there was an original intention by the city to allocate one point two million in ARPA funds for this project. We used that as a conversation point, uh, with Senator Torres, who was able to take that local investment, both private and public, to bring back some state dollars to the project as well. And so we are, you know, ready to move forward based on what's in play as well as some future funding, um, for this project. I think this is the great, the, really the right way to do this. Because one of the things as, um, public officials and elected officials that I think is really important is maximizing the investment, um, by the public. And what better way to maximize it than to take a public investment and use that as a way of generating private investment towards projects? That public-private partnership, I think is money well-spent. The impact of this Pasco clubhouse is huge. The kids that are there, um, over the last twenty years have benefited greatly from club programming. So part of my request to you this evening, in addition to, yes, the renewal of the lease that's on the agenda, which I appreciate, is also a recommitment of those ARPA funds so that we can move forward in confidence, uh, to really make phase one and phase two happen and be able to go fundraising confidence, additional private dollars to really make that project happen. So I wanted to provide you tonight both a programmatic update, uh, appreciation for all you've done to invest in kids, but also a request to look at reallocating those ARPA funds so that we can move forward in confidence.
Thank you, Mr. Ace. Do we have any, Ms. Prowls?
Just a quick question. You did mention all your other programs. Are you still offering the before and after-school, um, care?
Sure. At the Eighteenth Avenue Facility is your question or just in general?
At any of your sites.
Yes, absolutely. So our licensed childcare programs, both for school-age and elementary youth, um, start before school and end after school. Now, obviously for early learning, that's a continuous timeframe. Um, for our school-age youth, they'll start at the club, transition to school and then come back to the club afterwards. And then during summer, uh, we run extended day programs. We actually used to run our summer camp at the Eighteenth Avenue Facility and we stopped doing that. Uh, the reason for that is, is we'd have a lot of kids from throughout the community, mainly West Pasco, that would come to that facility for, uh, an all-day summer camp. And then the neighborhood kids would just kind of be watching kids come into their club. So we've moved that, uh, to some of our school-based partnerships so that we can protect our Pasco clubhouse to provide, um, services to kids during the summer. So.
I just want to add real quick, and I think I've shared this before. My kids did go to, uh, Boys and Girls Club. They did very well. They, they were, they entered Boys and Girls Club, uh, when they were being bullied in, in school. And so it helped them develop skills to where I'm amazed because one's in National Guard and wrapping up college, the other one graduated as an astrophysicist. Who does that? I don't have that in my genes.
I don't know how to spell that. So.
But, right, but, but the point is, uh, thanks to Boys and Girls Club and the help and the encouragement and your mentors there helped them a lot. And so this is a program that I fully support. And I look forward to, uh, figuring out a way to continue the funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prowls. Uh, hopefully, Mr. Ace, you can spell your last name.
I can spell that. I just can't spell astrophysicist. So.
Uh, thank you. I, I, thanks for taking that. Uh, Mr. Harpster.
Thank you, Mr. Ace, for that presentation. What's the typical background of kids that are coming to use these facilities?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, I can provide you some metrics after the fact. Um, well, I can do some of them now. So when we talk about our Pasco clubhouse, So when we talk about our Pasco Clubhouse, over 96% of the youth that attend that club um qualify for free and reduced lunch, right? So we're we're dealing with families that, you know, have some economic challenges. But I'm hesitant to describe that background and demographic because our mission says young people who need us most, and that looks different. Sometimes, um you know, it's it's kids that come home to an empty house because those parents are working hard and they just need a safe, positive place to be. Sometimes, you know, like I'll use an example, um uh we serve homeschool kids. A lot of times the club becomes a socialization avenue for them because they're not necessarily in a large group setting during the day. Sometimes it's that peer connectedness. Sometimes it's that looking for mentoring. Or, you know, when you look at Richard, uh who's our our high school coordinator, he's taken the role of a a real male role model for a lot of the young people that we serve. So there's really not a set piece, Mr. Harpster, of who the kids are that we serve. They are young people who need us most. But I think what we know is that they come to the club because the club adds value to their life, regardless of the situation they're coming from. But the majority of kids that we serve at our Pasco Clubhouse are definitely struggling, uh their families are struggling financially. And then there's some other struggles that those kids face as well.
Appreciate that.
But we don't have barriers. We don't say if you don't meet X, Y, or Z, you can't come to the club. We want to be there to serve all young people.
I was I was one of the kids that was homeschooled and went for socialization and clearly that didn't work for me.
We think it's worked out.
Took my words.
Yeah. Yeah, like like Mayor Serrano said, just really sincerely appreciate the work that you and and your team does. And um I'd definitely be interested in reallocating funds, but also maybe presentation from staff on on options there. When you take from one and or give to one, then you're taking from another and um we'd just like to know what our what our options are there.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster and Mr. Mulley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And uh I'm very familiar with you, Mr. Ace. Uh my kids.
A lot of years.
Yeah, both my daughters went there and uh good memories. And uh again, I remember going to different facilities and uh again, we always bring up about them. Love going to the the swimming pool out in the summertime and uh of course, the things with Bobby Luttrell. I know there were some things that they did, like they went to, my one daughter went to different colleges. They had like a tour and a movie night and all that kind of stuff. So I really also very supportive of your programs. Just thank you. And you really helped me out in a time of my life when I was a single father and I didn't have any options. And the Boys and Girls Club was the only option I could come up with to entertain them while I still worked. So uh very thankful for all you do. And uh now we have one daughter's in the Air Force and then the younger daughter's a Marine. So I was saying, they went from very uh shy girls to girls that were uh, you know, more active. And I think a lot of that was the Boys and Girls Club, being able to help them and push them forward and and know that they were becoming individual that they didn't maybe think that they could. So just say thank you for all your work in that time of my life. So thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Pass it on to staff. They did the hard work.
All right, thanks.
Seeing no further questions or comments, Mr. Ace, thank you for the wonderful presentation. My suspicion staff for the lease element, we'll be seeing that next week.
Um, that is correct, uh, Mr. Mayor, and we'll also bring um an update on ARPA here soon, so uh we can have that discussion.
Yeah, I think that'd be super helpful to understand what we're looking at and obviously weighing. We had some legislative asks for the MLK Center and it sounds like some for this as well. We don't want to obviously compete against our own interests, uh but also want to serve our community as as a whole. So I appreciate you bringing that back and hopefully we'll have a a positive discussion and certainly pay attention to um the agendas and, you know, we we'd, I'd certainly welcome back.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item C, which is Targeted Urban Area Tax Exemption Program, which has Ms. Sigdel and also Mr. McFadden, I believe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is also my pleasure to introduce uh Port Pasco Director of Economic Development and Marketing, Stephen McFadden, who is a familiar face to us. He's also assisting the city with uh our own economic development endeavors. And uh he's here to present uh to council on Targeted Urban Area Tax Exemption Program.
It's a tough ask to follow when the Boys and Girls Club are up here first. So Mayor and Council, one little sidebar note, because the Boys and Girls Club was here. We, as economic developers, when we're doing recruitment work, trying to bring business and industry to a town, talk about quality of life and sense of place. Boys and Girls Club and programs like it give families and children a sense of place. It grows our quality of life and I can promise a company that's thinking about Pasco that this is a great place to raise a family and to bring new jobs. In order to do that, we have to really compete with every state in the nation, every city in the nation, every poor district in the nation. Because companies, especially large industrial companies, go after the best deal. And you'll find it, I'm sure you've seen in the slides, Washington State's not the most incentive-friendly state for the recruitment of business and industry. And I was just reading about Texas State Economic Development and looking at their direct recruitment grants and noticed that they had 10 grants that exceeded $20 million to a single company to get them to locate. The company's allowed to use whatever they want, whether they use that to build a building or to buy ground or to do job training. We're lucky if we can get a couple hundred thousand directly from the state to secure, you know, grant recipient. So we're gonna talk tonight about a new incentive that the city of Richland has put into play over the last year that we've been watching, talking to the city staff over there and believe it's something that we should be considering over here in Franklin County and at the city of Pasco. So they were talking about Chapter 8425 RCW, which is the Targeted Urban Areas Exemption. It was amended in 2021 and that amendment went into effect in July of 2022. What this accomplishes is offering a property tax exemption on the new construction of manufacturing facilities. That can be an existing company who chooses to expand and is going to build a brand-new building, cannot be attached to its existing building, it has to be freestanding. That can be a company that we're trying to retain, who's going to leave to go to another state because they can get a better deal. And we can offer this particular exemption to get them to stay and expand, which is a requirement. Or it's a company that's running a site selection process inside of the Western United States or the entire United States is talking to us about Texas, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee and many other states that really outpace us in providing recruitment incentives to get the best jobs to land here. The interesting thing about this exemption is that it does not include the value of the land that already existed here. So the the property tax assesses the value of that land is not factored into the exemption. It's only the new structure where manufacturing actually occurs, which is really important because that has always been a barrier to getting this type of incentive past the state legislature. These are, I threw this in here because I follow who the top 10 states are for business incentives. These are them when you talk about industrial recruitment in terms of what they offer to land the best and brightest companies that create the best jobs. And when I talk about best jobs in manufacturing, food processing, any kind of industrial development, is a job that's paying top-dollar wages, providing top benefits and it providing their employees a great way of life when they come to these particular projects. Our state's constitution is actually very restrictive and so therefore the state cannot just become one of the top 10 in terms of what it offers in cash incentives and tax exemptions for recruitment. The legislature has done some good work. Everyone talks about the tax exemptions and the great deal that Boeing got, but actually food processing has a BNO tax deduction and an exemption. And your food processors here in Pasco use those deductions. There's a general manufacturing, sales and use tax exemption primarily around the construction sales tax. Renewable energy is a big-ticket conversation right now all around the United States. And Washington State does offer incentives for them as well. But a straight cash incentive only comes from the Governor's Strategic Reserve Fund. He has a very limited budget. Depending on the biennium, it can be 3 million or 6 million per year. But typically, it's somewhere in the middle to that. And the largest grants that we've seen is 100,000 to 350,000 dollars for a large job creation project. Derogold, for instance, it's almost a billion-dollar project now. It's gonna create a total between Derogold and their third-party cold story, the most 400 jobs, all of those above the median hourly wage for Pasco and Franklin County. They did not qualify for an SRF grant. So Tridex stepped up and provided 500,000 as an incentive to get them to pick Pasco over the last two cities that were in the running. So the Targeted Urban Area is the newest legislative effort. We feel like it's a possible game changer for us to recruit companies that skip over Washington State in their site selection process. The city of Richland proved you can actually help one of your local businesses stay on day one of them putting this into place, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that in a moment. So the law allows cities to establish a target urban area, we call it TUA for short, that encompasses its undeveloped industrially-zoned lands. Counties can also opt into TUA, but that's not a requirement. An individual city can create a TUA, create its boundary, which encompasses its industrial land, and then offer the incentive program, which must, each business must apply and the city council must approve. Some of the requirements, companies must certify that it wouldn't build in Washington State or Pasco but for the availability of the property tax exemption. They must certify that the project will create a minimum of 25 new family living wage jobs in Washington State that is currently an average wage of $23 an hour or more. They must have those jobs be a 2,080-hour-a-year position with healthcare benefits. Must construct a minimum of 10,000 square feet and must invest a minimum of $800,000 in those construction projects. Benefits to the manufacturers, the value of new construction and manufacturing facilities is exempt from property taxes. That value is exempt for 10 successive years from the date they receive their tax exemption certificate. The exemption does not include value of the land or non-industrial manufacturing-related improvements. Think administrative offices, corporate offices, board rooms, those types of things. The exemption does not apply to county property taxes unless the county adopts a similar resolution to allow it and conducts its own application process. The benefits to the community, new family wage jobs, significant private investment, construction sales tax revenue, future increased property tax revenue when you get this project off of the exemption and no loss of existing revenues. The city of Richland put this program into place in 2022 or early 2023, excuse me. These are the projects that are already in the books. They currently have a fifth project down there, Sine, that's pending um that they hope to see come to fruition this year. ATI is an aerospace company already in place in Richland. They were looking to do an expansion project and they intended to take it out of state. The city put this on the books. The company came back to the table and said, how does this work for us? So their project value, 111 million dollars, 49,000 square feet of building, 93 new jobs. They qualify for a 10-year exemption at 2.2 million dollars. If you look at the Framatones, um the second phase of the Framatone expansion, which is actually a new company partnering partnering with Framatone and building on their site. They're gonna invest 335 million dollars, 189,000 square foot building, 200 jobs, but it's a 5.9 million dollar exemption. And then Atlas Agro, which has seen a lot of press over the last year, and that's a company that plans to um convert air into actual fertilizer for the farm and ag operations. And that will use a hydrogen process to do so. They currently are looking at a potential of 19 million dollars during the 10-year exemption. Total 28.4 million dollars in exemptions. More importantly to us, 1.5 billion dollars in private investment, 770,000 square feet of new structure that'll be taxable once the exemption period expires and 729 high-quality jobs. This is the map for Richland's project and that is uh Horn Rapids Triangle Targeted Urban Area. You can name it whatever you want, but you have to call it a TUA. And Pasco could elect to follow suit, identifying ground that would take into account the Pasco Industrial Center, the Tri-Cities Airport and undeveloped land currently zoned industrial around and in the city limits. I've handed, provided a packet for you so that you can read the actual city of Richland documents. I give you the state law, the fact sheet, the Richland application for businesses, a one-page marketing fact sheet. And then I also, um thanks to Manny Wollner, the Economic Development Manager of the city. She also provided us their back-house application process and timeline, which literally is how they line it out to make sure they comply with the state law for each company that they consider. That's it in a nutshell. There's some reading there that I think will help inform you even more. The state law is not very restrictive, but it does require that that company certify that without this program, it will go to another state. And that's really important. And I think that that's something to stress. And the other piece to stress is they can apply, but they're not guaranteed this exemption. It would be to this board for you to decide to grant them that exemption. And the city council in Richland has done that with each of the applicants thus far. And I would also note that as soon as the program was put into place, Benton County took a look at it and they have since adopted the program as well. There is no negative impact to the school districts or the junior taxing districts. If you grant an exemption, the only thing that project is exempted from is the city of Pasco's share of new property tax revenue. Happy to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden. I see a couple of lights. Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. McFadden, every time I hear you speak, I'm reminded how grateful I am you're on our team. You even feed my enthusiasm enthusiasm and get me excited about the opportunities in Pasco. So thank you so much for your presentation. I do have one question for you. What what kind of feedback are you getting from like existing businesses that have been perhaps generational and feel like they've paid their fair share for decades? And all of a sudden, the new kid on the block gets this, you know, break or whatever? Have you heard any feedback about that?
I haven't heard any feedback about that with regard to this new program yet because Richland was the first city in the state to actually take advantage of it. But I will tell you this, a lot of those companies, back when they developed, A, didn't think about asking for incentives or B, knew that it was very limited in the state as it was. There's no way to do retroactive, unfortunately. So what's become a real challenge for economic developers is you have probably 15 to 17 states in the nation that provide, they give away the cart and the horse and the Cadillac to get a company to locate in their state because of the tax revenue generation and how that payroll circulates in their communities and generates sales tax. But when you look at that particular element, we're competing against the big kids. And we needed some tools to do that. This helps us get there.
Cool. Well, I like it and I appreciate the presentation. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm, Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. I was I was just gonna ask, do we know how much acreage currently that this could fall into? Or how we can create that boundary?
We haven't done that analysis yet, Councilman, and I think it's something that we need to do. Jacob and I have had a real preliminary conversation about what should we do? What could we do? And should we draw a boundary that takes in more ground rather than less ground? The one key, based on the state law, it already has to be zoned industrial. So we can't grab farm ground or R1 ground and convert it. It has to already be zoned industrial.
I guess, so what would be the timeline for something like this? Do you think this is time is of of the essence right now?
I would always say that an incentive to land large companies' time is of the essence. But this is really something for you to decide as a council? If this is a project that you think we need to implement to give Pasco this tool to bring new companies to town? One of the things that Port Pasco is talking about is how can we diversify the industry sectors that are setting up shop in Pasco and Franklin County region? Because our neighbors across the river have a lot of diversity in terms of the job selection. And that allows you to bring lots of different types of skill sets to town. So it's the reason why we're considering an aerospace park at there. So it's the reason why we're considering an aerospace park at there. So I will go soon.
Right, um. You kind of mentioned earlier about cities offering incentives, do you think? There's other incentives that we could create here at the local level that can entice companies to come here?
There's not a lot of ways for you to gift funds. Some of the major metropolitan communities do find ways to create economic development incentive fund. Typically, those are tied specifically to constructing the public infrastructure. Necessary to serve the company at the land site they arrive at. It's not a check from the city of Pasco to Acme Company.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls, uh seeing no further lights, I'll just throw out my two cents, you know. We've we've been blessed to be one of the first, if not the first jurisdiction to adopt the tax increment financing for the Broadmoor area. Um, I would be interested in uh understanding what exactly our inventory of qualifying land would be. Um, to help attract additional businesses and then really a determination of whether or not that land would be an attract in an attractive location. You know, for example, if it's down say off A Street, uh and we already have Amazon going in there and some other large players. That might not be the right solution, but to the extent that we may have some on some of that virgin ground. Out in Broadmoor elsewhere, uh there may be some attractive places to adopt this in a location specific. And I also know our, I know our staff also very involved in uh trying to track new businesses through various conferences and trade shows, so. I think this may be an opportunity for us to look at, I have spoken with Mayor uh Richardson. Over there in uh Richland and she she was kind of boasting um their landings, if you will, and and certainly. You know, folks may not like the laying off the taxes on the front end, but when you're looking at one point two to four billion dollars, I'd have to go back to the slide. Uh plus seven hundred plus jobs, you know, uh it's pretty significant and to your point, you know, one point six billion dollars, so still light. Um, so you know, there's a lot of opportunity for growth and some of it maybe just uh, you know, you've mentioned Framatone that already exists, but now you're. Bringing in a partner there, so yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity and hopefully uh if we see the the opportunity here in Pasco, we can. Look at implementing something or at least have the discussion.
I agree, one thing I want to point out is there's a clock ticking, so when a company applies and they come to you and you say yes. We're going to grant you that temporary tax exemption until you finish your project and you actually get your tax exemption certificate. They have three years to build and be open. That may be something that requires a massage at the legislative level because three years is difficult. For a billion dollar project and if you need an example of that, you could look at Dairy Gold. Who we have been working with since August of twenty twenty. So that project will not be online, fully online until December of twenty twenty-five. So twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, there's a conversation that the city of Richland is having about how can it help lead that discussion? I think it would be great if you talk about it during your legislative planning. For next year's session, because if there is an item for a fix, we would like to see five, six or seven years. Uh or tiered so that the largest companies have more time to get their projects through permitting and construction.
Thank you, message received loud and clear and hopefully if the port is intending to legislate or work lobby the legislature. Uh you'll be involved or or re-signal that to staff.
We would and we're working together on a multitude of different types of economic development projects that are city-led. With my coaching role or my chair sitting, whichever is necessary. And um the Port of Pasco is actually not able to do this, it's only for cities and counties. And I know that there are conversations around the state where a city will do it, the county will not. Or both will choose to partner for the greater good, I think that's a great opportunity. What I do know is that people are paying attention to what Richland's pulled off in the last year and we shouldn't be too far behind them.
Thank you, appreciate the encouragement. Uh moving on to uh I guess if we have any questions or comments from. Uh the general public. Saying none, uh we'll move on to item D, which is behavioral health update in Benton Franklin Counties. And that's from Chief Crowley, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for this time to uh be able to have the opportunity to discuss projects and updates um related to behavioral health. Uh tonight we'll be going over a couple of topics, the first one um about the mental health sales tax. The other one about the behavioral health advisory committee, which I'm fortunate to have two individuals here that participate on that committee. Uh current projects, project updates, additional funding and then also what the city of Pasco has in resources. So the uh the chemical dependency and mental health sales tax, this is a one-tenth of one percent tax that was implemented in twenty twenty-two. Um, it actually went into effect in Franklin County, uh April first of twenty-two and Benton County and uh on July first. Uh initially revenues were allocated for programs and services, but in twenty twenty-three, July of twenty twenty-three. That was expanded out to uh cover capital expenses as well. Uh to date, uh Benton County has received or collected a little over eight million dollars and Franklin County County has collected a little over five million dollars. Uh so far as the behavioral health advisory committee, uh this was created March first of twenty twenty-two, it consists of seventeen voting members. Uh these members include representatives from fire, law, uh health experts and people with lived experiences. It also has seven non-voting members and these are more uh individuals that can help us uh answer any technical questions that that come up. And again, these are, these members are appointed by county commissioners and serve a three-year term. Uh again, the uh the committee is devised, is developed um to create equal representation for both counties. And um the main reason for them again is advisory committee is to advise the county commissioners. So through um when the sales tax was implemented, there was a couple uh main projects that they wanted to tackle. Uh one was the recovery center, which uh is uh in the works right now and the name for that uh was born in. The Columbia Valley Center for Recovery is what it's termed, uh sobering center and also a field response team. So the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery, uh it's located at nine hundred South Auburn Street, so this is the old um. K G H building, Benton County actually purchased this building through separate funds on their own and own it. The provider for the recovery center went out to an R F P and was awarded to Conference of Health. And the cost for the current four phases for the recovery center is at twenty-eight point five million dollars. Uh currently, there is twenty-one point three million um that we have collected and have for this project. Again, this project is for the first four phases and those include a crisis stabilization unit, a crisis relief center. A secure withdrawal management center, which is a detox center and a residential treatment center for substance use disorders. Um, it's only a portion of the structure and it's actually the the building itself. Um is large enough where there's, it can expand to many other services, which is something that is wanted, so the idea is to have. Uh one building, one campus with all services included. The sobering center, um right now it's looking at the uh the location for that is gonna be out fourth and Margaret here in Pasco. Uh it would serve as a standalone facility and right now as it's being looked at to be developed would be almost a temporary um fix right now. Uh the idea is to have that facility um at the center of recovery. Uh but right now the need was warranted that uh we want to get something moving a little bit quicker than what the uh recovery center is on on target for. Uh that provider was um Lord's, Lord's Health, uh was recommended by behavioral health. Uh they went out for an R F P as well and they were the only provider that uh. That lasted throughout process, uh the cost for that was six, little over six hundred thousand dollars and currently Lords is seeking a little bit more money. To help fund that project, a couple of other items came up that they wanted to fund and um that's where we're at right now for the funding part. Uh the funding for that additional money they're they're looking for is right around three hundred fifty thousand to four hundred thousand dollars in extra funds. Uh the services for the sobering center, uh this is a twenty-three hour service and so individuals can come um. Voluntary and be there up to twenty-three hours. And then the last one is the field response team and this is um a team that'd be uh built to assist first responders. And help with uh any kind of pretty much non-emergent call that comes through. Uh related to behavioral health, alcohol and substance abuse. Uh the team would consist of peer counselors as well as having behavioral health uh clinicians with this team. Uh the provider is comprehensive health, that's gonna be um recommended by the committee. Uh this is a pretty new R F P that just got accepted and so we don't have any data yet as far as exact costs on that. Uh we should have some through our next meeting, which is uh the second Tuesday of next month. So the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery, uh the updates on what's going on here, so the design and uh validation of deliverables. Should be completed by the end of this month, so we should have again another update at our next meeting. Uh it's anticipated for demolition of some of that area that they want to rebuild is supposed to be in uh this summer. And services are expected to start happening out of there uh late twenty twenty-five. The sobering center, uh right now where that's landing is um. They are still seeking approval from the both both board of commissioners and uh again, there's waiting um. For additional funding since that was part of it, it's on top of the R F P, it is still with, I believe it's Franklin County. But uh we are still looking for approval from both commissioners. Uh board of commissioners and that field response team again, um. That is a new R F P that was um looked at by uh the committee and recommend recommendations given to the commissioners as well. So we're waiting on that to go through that process. So as far as additional funding, the opioid settlement funds, so that's uh a lot of talk about what's going on with that. Right now for the city of Pasco, we are expecting to receive two point one million dollars of that settlement fund and that's over uh spread over seventeen year period. Uh right now, currently the city of Pasco has received a little over three hundred thousand dollars of of that money that we have uh put away. What we're looking at is Benton County is uh. Starting up and kind of heading up the the in I L A, it's the pooling funds resulting in the state of Washington opioid settlement. Um, this I L A is being drafted right now and being looked at, um. Right now Benton County got a one a lump sum of a million dollars that they're committing to the recovery center. And this I L A is what they're looking for is support from other agencies, whether it's other cities, uh other counties. To pull their money together into one fund to help support the recovery center. And again, what we're looking at is uh through a collaborative effort, we feel it's it's better use of money instead of trying to do these oddball. Projects to bring our money together and fully fund the recovery center. So what is, what is Pasco doing right now, so Pasco has a couple of programs, we have uh resource navigators and we also have a behavioral health clinician. Uh the resource navigators, uh they are contracted, well, actually both are contracted through Awareness Consulting and Training LLC. Uh the resource navigators are funded through department, uh department budget through the city of Pasco, we have that funded currently right now. And that scope of work is ongoing, um as as far as our annual budgets keep getting approved for this program. The behavioral health clinician, uh again, through the same company that we're contracting through, uh they are actually funded through ARPA funds and that is set to go through to uh. Twenty twenty-six, uh again, the goal is um to get these wrapped in to one program for the city of Pasco and is ongoing. Uh contract, uh it's a great program and what they're doing here is they're helping relieve some of the stresses on our EMS system. So when we have individuals call for nine-one-one services, a lot of times what we see is they don't either need to go to the jail or they don't need to go to the hospital. But they need other resources and that's what these um individuals do is they help get them the resources they need, whether it's food insecurities, housing. Um any other support that the community can offer and so they really do help individuals without just going to the hospital. And that is um. As a quick overview of what's going on with behavioral health and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I I see no comments or no lights on, I guess I'll ask one quick question. As to the two point one million dollars, uh does that kind of slowly taper down uh over time? You know, if we're getting almost, you know, over three hundred, it's a significant.
Sure, you know, I don't know that projection with that, I can find out if we can get to that answer, I'm not sure if how it's broken out throughout that timeframe.
Okay, and then just uh I guess if there are any other absolute needs we have from that money, um let us know, but. Uh otherwise, I think it makes sense to allocate it all towards. One project especially, something like this is gonna have tremendous regional impact. So you know, you certainly have my support on the project.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Uh seeing no additional comments, do we have any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will move on to item E, Water Rights Subcommittee Updates, looks like we're gonna get kicked off by Deputy City Manager Sigdell.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh earlier this year, um council directed staff um and. Few of the council members who volunteered um to be uh to uh have a water rights subcommittee. Um, the council members uh that are part of this subcommittee are uh Council Member Grimm and Council Member Peralis. Uh the objective of this subcommittee was uh to assess our uh current municipal water rights codes. Uh evaluate the current and emerging issues uh and propose amendments uh to enhance water rights management overall. Next slide please. So we held some public meetings, um and they were held in January thirty-first and February twenty-second. Um, most of the format of the meeting was council member remarks, a staff presentation and allowing for a forum for public. To comment and voice um their uh opinions on the current code, but also. Um their recommendations for uh changes for the future. Overall, majority uh agreed with the in-Luffy uh that was adopted, which was um. Um was a significant increase from the prior ones, but majority agreed agreed that that is. Um around um the price for water rights in this market. Uh majority also uh agreed that there is a need for the city to acquire water rights. Um and um that can be done via transfer during development or via acquisition by the city. Um, the many disagreed with the city's outreach or really lack thereof. Uh so that was a, that was a big sticking point uh for people and also um disagreed with the retrospective ten years. Uh where a land, if there was a transfer of water rights um or sale of water rights on a piece of land. Uh within the last ten years, there being a fifty percent surcharge on that water right. Um, and while many did not like the fifty percent surcharge, um as we were having the discussion, there was a certain level of. Understanding of escalating costs because you cannot um go in and buy water rights in small chunks. Uh but also the debt service cost of buying bigger pieces of water rights and kind of holding on to them as we're. Utilizing them for development, um so there was uh understanding of that fifty percent surcharge while. In the past, there might, that might have looked uh like a uh a big number uh for a surcharge. Uh there was also requests for operational clarification on commercial and industrial uses. Which is something that we've not required in our code in the past, so with residential, there's a lot more standard water right need. Uh whereas for commercial and industrial, those uses and needs vary very significantly. Uh uh one big example is Dairy Gold versus Amazon. How much those water uh water is required by both facilities, even though they're both industrial. Um is significantly different and so more of a operational clarification. Uh that was requested um for for those different uses. The recommendations um from the subcommittee was to remove the ten years retroactive element. Um and make that retroactive essentially as of the passing of the ordinance, which was of twelve-three two thousand three. Uh and evaluate the water rights uh in-Lufy's on a regular basis, so we're not getting into these situations again. Uh every two years, uh and explore water conservation programs. So that is the presentation that staff has and um appreciates any discussion and guidance for path forward.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, um I see Mr. Grimm's light on, but before before we go there, I just kind of want to make some overarching. Comments, you know, over the past several years, we've had some really big lifts from staff. It required significant outreach, uh you think about the cannabis issues, you think about this issue, you think about um. Uh you know, I had a list of a couple of other ones, but yeah, um. Yeah, I mean, we've had a lot and um you know, and obviously the the overpass, the design standards, we could go on and list it. And I think this is probably an example where hopefully the staff can take away coulda, shoulda, woulda. Um and an opportunity to really express it. And an opportunity to really express it. And I understand that there are some nuanced issues that we don't need to rehash with personnel leaving, et cetera. Hopefully what we can do. From a learning, just an overall, you know, thirty thousand foot view is is say, okay, maybe one of the things we can do when these global issues hit. Is really focus on the communications, you know, through social media, through other opportunities. The city generally does a wonderful job at that. I want to be clear about that, but there are some, again, we've we've missed on some big issues and it's caused us some heartburn. So. That's kind of my general takeaway, not having sat on the subcommittee. So I'll get get to Mr. Grimm, then Mr. Peralis, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to, yeah, just kind of follow up. Can we go to the last slide back there where the actual recommendations are? Thank you and thank you for your presentation also. Reach up, appreciate it. But. Yeah, I guess just picking up kind of where the mayor left off. I mean, this got started or was started just because we heard a lot of feedback and. You know, I think you kind of encapsulated what some of that feedback was. And so really, this was just trying to be fair. Trying to be fair to just our water customers that pay residential water, city water. Developers and really I kind of my first tiptoe into politics of trying to make everybody happy and. Not sure that that's ever gonna be possible, but. You know, I I met with Steve Worley and Adam, our city manager, just trying to understand that and. Our old Public Works Director, Mr. Worley, gave me multiple links and lots of late night reading. And then I met with developers and tried to understand this issue and I think I've still just scratched the surface. It is a very complicated issue, but I think. With the help of Councilmember Peralis and he's he's gonna have his own comments, but I I think we've, you know, brought this to. I think what's probably the best conclusion we can. Where, yes, the retroactive element goes away. You know, the the one thing we may want to discuss as a council more specifically. The the water rights every two years. I mean, that really just came out of assessing that one year. Or each and every year would probably be cumbersome to staff and. You know, just a little clumsy in many ways, but five years is probably too long and you know, may maybe three years is better, maybe two years. I know. There was a lot of sticker shock when it went from, oh, I moved my thing now from seventeen twenty five to forty one twenty five. You know, most of the feedback I heard that valuation that came from Mr. Daryl Olson was was fair. There was a few people. Who thought it was a little complicated and kind of tough reading how he got to that, but. From all sides of the issue, I heard nothing but positive comments about him and. You know, there there may be a little discussion over the 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 current fee, but forty one twenty five. But that seems to to be really fair where we're at. And so, you know, I know especially Councilmember Peralis will probably speak to, you know. Somehow, I'm not sure we can tie it into, you know, this adjustment here, but it is something we should explore is water conservation programs. I mean, I I look at the the Kalamath Basin and, you know, there's the farmers are starved for water. We look at the. The desert southwest and all those municipalities and regions trying to feed off the Colorado River and. You know, we see the Columbia River out here and it's easy to think that, oh, yeah, we've got plenty of water. We're in the Northwest, you know. We don't have to worry about that, but I think is, you know, just population continues to boom and. I I think water is just gonna continue to be one of the most precious resources if it's not already on the planet. And so I think. This is something that just needs to stay in front of us as much as possible. So, you know, with that, that's kind of my conclusions and. Of time spent so far on this issue, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm and Mr. Peralis.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I know that we've we've myself and staff and Councilmember Grimm have spent a lot of time on this and. I I like the recommendations. These are a lot of the ones that we came together and kind of created consensus. I would like to change that last, that third one to really be explore and implement water conservation programs. I don't just to want to explore. I don't want a year from now and we've done nothing, two years from now and we've done nothing. I think it's a. It's a commodity that's going away. And I think we need to be really. Looking into finding ways to implement those. Again, we we have a large portions of our of our city using potable water for irrigation. I think we need to partner with the, you know, Frank County Irrigation District to figure out ways that we can kind of. Convert that over, just things like that, like Councilmember Grimm said, it needs to be front and center. I think another one on there that I would like to see on there would be, we need to have more. Stakeholder engagement. This has been very retroactive. It was after the fact. I think if some of us didn't get on the council. This would have just been voted on, sealed and delivered. And this is what the policy we would have had going forward. And I wasn't a fan of it back in October. I mean, I went back and looked. It it was presented to the council on October tenth and by. November twenty seventh, it was voted on and that was it. And but then we learned that, you know, there was a study. They've been looking at this for a while. Well, on on October tenth was was the first time that myself and many other people heard about this issue. That we were having water rights issues, that there was a study done. And so if all that stuff had been going on, then why didn't the public know? Why didn't the council members know? So I I think we need to be more forthcoming and transparent when we're doing stuff like this, especially heavy lifting. Type of complex issues like this, we need to get with stakeholders, we need to get with developers, builders, tricity, you know, association or realtors. Whoever's gonna be affected by this and not be so retroactive, not be so reactive. I mean, we spent six months with this. I mean, I'm sure that study took a while and for us not to involve the public, involve the stakeholders prior to October tenth. I I think we just need to start changing the way we do these types of policies or. We need to change the way that we come to the point where we are kind of about to implement a policy and get the stakeholder engagement. So I think that should be a recommendation. I I know in my recommendations, I said it should be mandated that if we have any policy change that we. You know, that we have stakeholder engagement and then we're not just rolling something out and then, okay, come over here, here's a hearing and then. Okay, cool. We had a hearing and then next week we're voting on it. I I don't want to see policies like that because this is the reason why these rooms get filled up. When we can be actively engaging. If we need to create subcommittees for all these types of issues, I'm game. That's fine. I'm I know what I signed up for. But I think we really need to be engaging with the stakeholders. But other than that, like I said, I don't know. This is, I don't think this is cut in stone, but. Like I said, I want to change that last one to really explore and implement water conservation programs. I agree with everything else. I know I I initially said I want to evaluate water rights in Lufy's every year, but two years is sound. And I'm in favor of the first one, but I think that fourth one, we really need to really go out of our way. And ensure that the stakeholders and people are gonna be affected by policies are really heard prior to us implementing anything. So on that, again, I want to say thank you to the staff. Again, we we spent quite a lot of time on this and and I'm looking forward to the future and and. But this needs to be front and center. You know, one of my favorite movies is The Big Short and he's sitting there betting on houses to fail. And at the very end of it, you see that he started betting on water. So water is gonna be a, it's it's a it's a depleting resource, so. We really need to be talking about this in the long term, keep it front and center and and start working on those conservation programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralis. Do we have any additional comments or questions, staff? Uh seeing none, I'll just throw in my thoughts. At first, I appreciate the two taking your time. I appreciate staff taking your time and. Members of the public for participating in this. I I agree with your position here that focusing on actually implementing something posts conversation of. Conservation. We need to do something prospective, so I I agree that we need to ensure that we have that. I know we do have some elements of the. Uh conservation written into our code. If I recall, we've got some elements that encourage their escaping, but I don't think it's real sharp teeth, if you will. So I think there's a lot more that can be done from the city's perspective. Again, I appreciate the time you put into this. And hopefully we're in a position where we've worked with the community, both regulated and general community where. Maybe not everyone's happy, but we've done what's right for the city looking forward. With no further, council lights. Do we have any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, then. We will move forward. Hopefully. Uh it sounds like you you're asking a modification, if I understand correct.
For a consensus right now. I mean, I would like to add that stuff, but it's not a deal breaker for me, you know. A lot of stuff we can kind of demand on the back end, you know, so. You know, if we feel like we're not getting what we want in a policy and stakeholder engagement, I know that's something that can be done. Emails, phone calls and stuff like that, but I I really would like to see explore and implement added to that. I mean, it's. I don't want to just sit in here talking about issues. Oh, this is what we want to do. This is what we're looking into and nothing ever happens. We, you know.
Right, I I think my my question more so is all those bullet points should add to modifying what was adopted at the end of last year. Is that correct? Is that you then your request for action from the two of you that we modify what was adopted?
Yes, that or sorry, if I cut you off there, Councilmember Peralis, that would be, yes, my. My understanding or our recommendation to the rest of the council would be to make those, you know, changes. And really, I agree with Councilmember Peralis. And I think he's right, not only to explore, but implement the co- the conservation. And also, yes, giving the stakeholders a meaningful, you know, voice, but. You know, I, you know, some of that, like he just said, could be tagged on at the future. I, you know, would like to just see the the ten year surcharge go away, keep the rate and. You know, just get this moving forward, at least get that part behind us and then, you know, we can, you know, lean on staff for some of that conservation and stuff. Going forward. And I guess maybe the one thing up for discussion is still, you know, how long the code. You know, we we look at renewing the rate or, you know, going back and look at, because I hear Councilmember Peralis still leaning towards a year, but. You know, it's just something we got to figure out as a council, you know, how often is, you know, the best due diligence for doing that.
Thank you. And I guess just to clarify, Mr. Lincoln, if I understand correctly, that first bullet point, remove the tenure retroactive. Require modification of what was adopted last fall. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so I I think to to close the loop here, we need to give staff direct direction.
Yeah, so I think the 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 top bullet, the ten years is the the direction for the ordinance. I think the. Ordinance may have also included the frequency that we were doing the, is that right?
There is some ordinance that does include that, so we'd have to revise it.
And and then as to the last one, we'll we'll put together a program and bring it to council and then it it's up to council to adopt it and and we'll we'll implement it from there. So I think the direction is pretty clear on on that one. We wouldn't just bring a policy for. Write a policy. We'll definitely present it to you to adopt.
Do you need further discussion or direction on modifying the ordinance that was adopted in twenty twenty three?
Just the direction on the number. I I'd like direction on the number of years for the evaluation, just that we're clear in case it is is something that's adopted in other sections of the code.
I think from my perspective, speaking for one, two years is fine. So is that the general push?
Understood. We got it. We'll bring it, we'll bring it back and and make the modifications. And if there's any other direction, it sounds like it'll be a pretty easy. Cross out the two and.
We can handle one versus two on the fly, right?
You mean, like if we decided at the at the meeting to change?
Yeah, if if we modified that, I think we we can do, even you and I can do the lawyer math to figure out the difference there, right?
That's right.
We gotta handle.
Thank you.
Six minute increments, right?
Right. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number six or seven, however it is now. With miscellaneous discussion, I see Mr. Lincoln, your lights back on.
Thanks, Mayor Council. A couple, couple of updates. Mr. Rice has the first one.
Good evening again, Mayor Council. I want to prevent or present a quick Cinco de Mayo preview as that is rapidly approaching, so. Happy to announce that we had several sponsorships so far this year totaling twenty eight thousand dollars from these members identified on the screen. The Pasco Economic Development Project, Leschawup Tires, Quantum Legal, Port of Pasco, Fiesta Foods. At Twin City Food, State Farm, Happo Center, which is great. The sponsorships really help embellish and extend our events to this. To the citizens of Pasco. So we appreciate your support. More to come on that. So far, we have forty one commercial vendors signed up for one or both days, depending what they're offering, twenty eight information and city booths. Six of our Pasco specialty kitchen vendors are signed up to attend and one of our downtown businesses through our downtown business outreach so far. So things are shaping up pretty good. And then just preview of the events, of course, we have a parade which is featuring a grand martial normal Rodriguez. We have our main stage both days, which includes school, local, tribal and professional entertainment. We have several activities, including a youth boxing event, a breakdancing contest, in case any of you want to sign up, still time. We have our Kids Zone, Big Rigs, Car Show, Beer Garden and Street Dance. And then, of course, we have several giveaways planned, including t-shirts, bags and stickers. Which I, of course, have a, one of our bags that are ready to go here as well, so we look forward to handing those out. And if this t-shirt escapes. Deputy City Manager Sigdell tonight, we'll also have some t-shirts like this, so. Coming at you. Uh so that wraps up my preview and I will get to add one more again on Friday, April twenty sixth, ten AM. We have National Arbor Day out at Highlands Park. Woodyer Elementary has about a hundred plus students planning to attend, another fifteen trees to plant, so invite, encourage any of you that like to come out and participate in that. Please do. Thank you very much.
Then Ms. Sigdell has an update on Lewis Street.
We have. An opening day for the bridge traffic for April twenty sixth, which would be this Friday. So, yes, so the bridge will be open for traffic on that day. The applications for the grants are open as of last Thursday and we do have. A disclaimer that all applications are based on reallocation of funding from Planning Commission and then with council. The Planning Commission meeting is scheduled at six thirty PM on April thirtieth, which is a Tuesday. And then the special council meeting is scheduled at two PM on May first, which is a Wednesday. So we'll be looking forward to those special meetings. But at this time, the application portal is open and we encourage the people who are eligible and in the impacted area. As 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 it's shown in the map to apply. So there's plenty of time to get assistance. Again, we are partnering and utilizing small business, Washington Small Business Development Center. Help and Maria Penna, who is one of their employees, who's more than willing to help them in in her capacity. So we're leveraging our partnership with them and city staff is available to answer any questions that applicants might have.
Last thing for me is just a reminder that next Monday is the fifth Monday, so there won't be a council meeting. So just a heads up. Thank you.
Thanks for breaking my heart there, Mr. Lincoln. And thank you all for the updates. Do we have any questions or comments from council, Ms. Blais though?
Um I do have a question. Pasco Taco Crawl, that is to benefit Boys and Girls Club, correct?
Yes, so the proceeds from that, whatever the additional dollars is after expenses are paid out, go to support.
Do you have any tickets left?
So tickets are available. I'm sorry if I butcher this. Sorry.
I just think it's best served for the.
Yes, no, absolutely. So tickets are available at Downtown Business and Byb available. Through their normal business hours, but if you need tickets outside of normal business hours, reach out to me and I'd be glad to help you out. I spent, had eight tacos today between my wife and I, just to be clear, and they were delightful, so.
I just wanted to mention, this is the first year I did it. Well, started to do it. I'm not finished. But I started on Saturday and I started downtown Pasco and it's. Definitely a fun event. So if you have not purchased your tickets, you still have time until May fourth, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and so twenty tacos, all vendors here in the Pasco community. I had Don Rubio's and Maria's today. Maria's has great tortillas. Don Rubio's amazing pickled onions.
And then at the end of the event, you could vote on who has the best taco.
Not only could you, but should you, because winning the competition is a badge of honor every year, so. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Blais though. I'm surprised you also didn't mention that the Pasco. High Dance Team is doing a fundraiser. Before I move along, you're welcome to speak to that if you'd like.
They are. They're going to Worlds and I believe it's in Florida. They have until August to raise forty thousand dollars. To send all of their dance team participants to Worlds. So they are. Little hustlers, I can tell you that. They will have fundraisers all over, so May first, they will be at. All over, so May first, they will be at Panda Express on Court Street. And if you use a code, I will be posting it on my Facebook and my LinkedIn, you have to use that code and they get fifty percent of the proceeds that. Um, are purchased from nine thirty AM till ten thirty PM on May first, so. There's also business sponsorship, so they have uh, quite a different avenues um, that they'll be raising money. I believe they're also selling. At graduation for like drinks, so. I will keep you posted, but if you're interested in a business sponsorship, you can reach out to me and I can give you the link or. Um, hook you up with Coach Becca, so.
Do you know whether or not that link will be posted on Pasco School District site?
I don't know if it is, but I know I'm pretty sure it's posted on the Pasco High Dance Team site. For uh, uh, on Facebook, I don't, and Instagram, I don't believe they have one on LinkedIn.
Maybe through our social media, and I don't know where this blurs lines, certainly, Mr. Ferguson, I don't wanna give you more work. We might be able to share that. I don't know if that's accurate or not, and certainly, Mr. Rice, um, hopefully they'll. Contact you about a booth down at the Cinco de Mayo, might be wise of them.
And if I understand our schedule correctly, they actually will be performing at our Cinco de Mayo event, so.
Perfect. Well, hopefully they'll stick around and share, share their needs. Uh, again, congratulations to that team, wonderful uh, representation of the city of Pasco, thank you. Uh, Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to make a quick comment real quick that I was really disturbed to see since the last time we met. Opening up the Tri-City Herald and to see that someone had stolen a car and driven it into the storefront of a marijuana dispensary since we last met and. You know, we had business owners, we had police, we had all kinds of people, sh- you know, come to the meeting before I was um, you know, on here to. You know, testify that they expected these kind of things to happen and so. Um, it just, it's really regrettable having a business in that area. And not that that kind of behavior and criminal activity is completely unheard of here, but. To have a business open within the first few months of their opening, to have something like that happen, I think is the kind of problems. We'd rather not have here in Pasco and I, again, I was just very disturbed to see that um, it's here now, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm, uh, Mr. Peralis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. Um, I contact a lot of our residents on Nextdoor. And uh, I was talking with a lot of them, so I was wondering, uh, some of them were asking if we can get a list of public works projects that that the city anticipates completing this year. Just like put it out so that they kinda know what's what's ahead, essentially.
We can do so and also there is a website. In our city website, there is a map that shows all projects that are. In construction or close to be in construction, so it's an interactive map. As you click on each of those projects, you can see the details on the schedule.
And then, uh, I know John's really, I mean, he puts a lot of updates on there and a lot of them are leaving comments on, you know, I've driven by Sylvester Street, haven't seen any work done for a week. Is there's things, there's ways we can bring, provide updates, you know, with like pictures and stuff that's been going on. I I know, uh, I, we have a lot of lucky loose now with all the construction across the Tri-Cities, but. There's a lot of individuals on on Nextdoor that I that I observed that are leaving comments such as that.
So on Sylvester Street, uh, there is work occurring. Actually, there was mill occurring this morning and throughout the day. Um, for each of the driveways that are gonna get rebuilt. Uh, there is traffic control set up throughout the western portion of the corridor. Um, to allow for the crews to move safely from one location to the next where they're doing work. And uh, the project I have, I do have a quick schedule on it. Um, it is intended that the work on the north side of Sylvester, on the west side of the corridor, will be completed by mid-June. Um, additionally, uh, there is work on the south side of Sylvester, on the western portion of the corridor. Uh, to be completed in August eighth. Um, and then, and there's some work actually happening right now to coordinate on what kind of stop work will be provided during. Uh, boat races, so those dates may be changing as we allow the contractor to to stop work for some time to allow for safe traffic. And finally, there is work happening on the eastern portion of the corridor later in the year with an anticipated completion in the fall.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Arpser.
Thank you. Uh, couple items, I was uh, surprised we didn't discuss legal tonight. I thought we had said a couple of weeks, um, but I could be wrong, so I knew time was up to S through that upcoming conference, so I was just wondering. If there was a particular reason.
Uh, yeah, we're we're, thanks for the question. We're we're still waiting to get some of the the breakdown of of some of the. The billings and we're still putting together the analysis for the the cost comparable, so. Still still working on that, apologies for the delay.
Um, no, just, I I thought we said two and I couldn't remember. Um, the other one was uh, zippering. So Road one hundred, northbound, and then the Blue Bridge either way. Washington State Patrol backed me up on this. Zippering is the most efficient way to travel in your vehicle. Um, I zipper all the time and I love passing the hundreds of cars that I get to pass and um. It's evidently supported by Washington State Patrol, so we'd encourage the five people here tonight to do so and we can uh, get through this traffic a little quicker.
Thank you. And Ms. Ross.
Just a, it's not a question exactly, but it's going back on the live feed. If I'm not mistaken, the website does show a live feed of. The progress of the construction, is that correct?
So there's two projects that have a live uh, feed. One is the Lewis Street Overpass and the other one is the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, for other projects, we don't have a camera on site, uh, providing that time lapse. But uh, the the map is updated regularly to ensure that we um, uh. Update any changes in schedule specifically for those.
And those can be found on the city of Pasco's website?
Yes, Public Works uh, s- subpage and there's construction projects.
Perfect. So to everyone watching and the five that are here, um, I would encourage you to visit the city of Pasco. Uh, page, website, Facebook page has, obviously has the information, but the website is where you could get. The most current, and I'm looking at staff over here for a nod, the most current, most accurate uh, feed on the projects at hand. Um, and progress and potentially some some finish dates. Yes, thank you for the nod. Uh, so again, uh, everyone watching, just follow the city of Pasco's website for those updates on the constructions. And probably there's, might be some uh, routes to uh, through less condensed traffic areas. So stay tuned to that.
Thank you, Ms. Ross, Mr. Milne.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I also had a question for Maria. Sarah, do you have an update on the road ninety-six? I know I've been reached out a couple of times about that and I was hoping you could uh. Give the community a couple uh, tidbits on that?
Yes, absolutely. We received um, preliminary plans from our consultant on what the implementation would look like. Uh, this is traffic calming on Road ninety-six and Court Street. Both solutions involve a combination of chicanes and um, some reader, sorry, raider. Um, feedback signs, some additional traffic limit signs. And in the case of Road ninety-six, it also includes some um, speed cushions or um, they're temporary. Basically humps so that, so that um, people can slow down through there. Um, those are to be installed during during um, warmer months and then removed in the winter. So that plowing can occur adequately. We don't have the final plans, so I I was hoping to see those. This week and then share those with with you all. Um, and implementation of those changes is being evaluated for either in-house through Public Works crews. Or um, a bid, depending on availability of our crews and other workload already scheduled.
Okay, I appreciate that report. If you could uh, if you find out exactly when, that would be appreciated, so I could let them know, cuz I keep getting calls every week wanting to know. Cuz they were very impressed with the presentation uh, a couple of months ago, but now they wanna know when they're gonna see it, so. If you could just send me an email or call me, I'd love to share with them and so I could have a little more time on my hands, so thank you.
All right, seeing no further comment by council, that moves us along. Uh, dive number seven, which is executive session, we already had that. Presumably, we have no additional need. Good, that means we've survived two years, two, two hours unscathed. Um, and that leads us to item number eight, which is adjournment. Thank you for being with us. It is nine twenty, this meeting is adjourned.